A planning permission study session order.
Commissioner Elmer?
Here.
Commissioner Kane?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Wanika?
Yep.
Commissioner Mains? Abbotson? Chairperson Lantis?
Here.
Member Strestigdean?
Here.
And Member Crowley?
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask the planning commission members to make any, to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so that they might come to a fair decision.
I'll just mention that the person involved in the North King Project is a member of the Historical Society. I don't think that will be an issue, but.
Yeah. Moving on, item one minutes, discuss any changes needed to the January eleventh, twenty twenty-three minutes. Anybody have anything? Okay, we need a motion to accept, or to accept the January eleventh, twenty twenty-three minutes as written. So then, the motion and a second commission. Would you have a one, keep what's first, you'll be right, be fine with me. I think we're just gonna do this on a, all of, all of papers say aye, all opposed? Commissioner comments, do we have anything, any comments you need to make on anything that's not on the agenda? What are your questions? The only thing I will say that has nothing to do with this is I get asked almost every other day. When they're gonna start on the dominoes, I noticed they've started working on the dominoes, building out on Saturday night, and so. Public hearings, we have the old business, we've got several items of old business, we have been asked by the applicant to move the Oakstar, which was item number four to item number one, so we're going to do that unless there are objections. Objection, right, Jenna, do you have a presentation for us?
I do.
Thank you commissioners for moving that up in the agenda, I really appreciate that.
Casey, do you have, as she brings her presentation up, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss with us?
Um, just, you know, really the background of this is, it's more of a lot combination of the old ABK plat out there, as they'll explain, that there was just kind of a small piece of ground that was gonna be unusable, so they, you know, it was part of the purchase of the Oakstar Bank, and this is just making it into one large lot instead of two separate lots, so it's more of a lot combination type of plat that we're working on here, so. But I will be here to answer any questions after the presentation though.
For this is its general location as he stated. This is the the plat referring to combined, and basically it's just cleaning up this, these, this combination, this has kind of been a little bit of a mess, so we're combining these, these pieces into
One lot.
Into one lot.
When you say these pieces, can you explain what you mean by these pieces? Are they just two, or are they three?
There are two. Maybe you can help me on here a little bit.
Yeah. So if you're able to zoom in on that, there, you'll see that this was originally lot four and part of lot five of the ABK addition. Now, when the Holiday Inn Express went in, there was right-of-way that needed to be dedicated for what is now King Street that goes back to the south, so it cut it out part of lot five. So you can see that faded out, kind of, it's faded back property line just west of King Street. So there was going to be this grass area that was going to be unusable, but part of the drainage from Oakstar Bank was gonna need to go through it. So the thought was, when they purchased the property, they were purchasing all lot four and then out to the new King Street right-of-way. And so what it did was created two lots, and so the city was looking to combine those lots into one, which is now just kind of the new lot one of block A of the ABK or the Oakstar Bank addition, is what we're calling this. So it was more of a cleanup exercise than anything. And I've, I'm sorry, the other thing that's important here is there is being ten feet of right-of-way dedicated along Twenty-third Street to match the city's standards for right-of-way and everything like that, so. There is being, because there will be a sidewalk on the south side of King Street being built with the Oakstar Bank, and there is a new ten feet of right-of-way being dedicated to allow for forty feet of right-of-way from the center line to the south.
Any questions for Jenna or for the applicant? Okay, so I guess, then we move it on to the regular meeting for public hearings. Anything else on that? Thank you Casey for being here today.
No problem, thank you very much, and if something would happen to come up, the city has my contact information and look forward to seeing it approved, thank you.
Now we'll go back to old business amendment to the fence regulations regarding fences and utility easements. Public hearing will be held on February the eighth at the regular meeting.
And this is Dennis Thorpe is here who can help speak on this. With the issues we've had with fences being built and easements, this is, this is not, to anybody in the room, but the, what we're proposing is to have a language change so there are no fences allowed in easements. Just to avoid those issues and conflicts with public utility. There's been language that's in your packet that's proposed.
Language change. Yeah. And we talked about this, a little bit.
I'm just assuming that the guys talked about this, I think.
Yeah, 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 November, right, before Thanksgiving. Yeah, we talked about this.
And basically what this does is just change the concept from, used to be able to build and put gates in the ends of them, and now you're, unless it's an exception, we're not gonna allow them to build in the right way.
Not to build in, in the easement or the right of way.
I'm sorry, easement.
And really what that does is, what we ran into is, and you see it all over town, there's fences built in the easements back right up to each other where we can't get to utilities.
Yeah.
Well, when we have to get there and we start tearing fences down, which is our right to do so, and we don't replace them, and we, of course, have people mad at us. And so we're just trying to eliminate a lot of the conflict that comes with the idea of building fences and easements.
Yeah.
And this won't change any of the fences that are already built.
Right. Through the expand by the end of the year.
Exactly.
I do have a question, it's about fencing, but it's also about utilities. Is there anything in our ordinances that requires new development to place the utilities actually out in the right-of-way of the street to prevent this for future developments?
That's a good question, I don't know, but I can give you information for you.
I think that that would be something that, because right now, as it is, the fencing doesn't allow, the way, the way that it is, fencing won't allow someone who owns a piece of land to be actually use it and utilize it, but yet they're responsible for maintaining it and paying your taxes on it. And I know that in other communities, that's how, how it's, isn't it in this new development where we're putting it out in the right-of-way? Putting it out in the street, I think that was part of the, the whole discussion last time as well, so if, if, if it's not there, is it something that we can look at possibly changing for future developments to prevent this from happening, people from limiting their rights?
Absolutely.
Thank you. My only concern, which I kind of expressed when we last talked about this, is just that there's some sort of plan for older properties where there's no, there's no logical way to get to the power lines and utilities, because there was no plan for it. There, there were no power lines and utilities when some of those developments were made. And so to, to be able to work with property owners to find a good solution, this affects my neighborhood because we have no alley, and so no matter what, by this ordinance, I wouldn't be able to have a fence at all. And that's not necessarily a good solution either, so I'm just hopeful that this will allow the city to work with those places and then move forward on all new developments to do a better job of where we put fencing.
We recognize that this is not always an easy thing for people, and there can be exceptions made, and they would have to build to what our current standards are for easements and.
And I wasn't on the discussion, I'm sorry, but why wouldn't you be allowed to have any fence at all?
Well, if, if the point is to not, to have to be able to access that power line, so my, our neighborhood, for example, Hickory and Cedar in that block has no alley, and then all of the backyards are different depths all the way down. So there's actually no, there's no like clear path where you can drive a vehicle down, so you're going to have to go through someone's yard to access a power line, which they did.
Is there a described utility easement on every one of those lots, or some of them just encroach further into the utility easement?
I need to go back and look at my property description, so I don't know, but like, because they're different depths, the power lines go through at different angles and different lots, and so it's a little bit more, it's, it's not as clean as if you were designing a modern development, like this is where the easement is. So yeah, it's, and you know, the house, a lot of those houses there are before the nineteen hundreds, so.
If we get into that discussion, I'd like to see some examples of that, because what I'm familiar with is the utility easement's a straight shot. Because of varying lot depths, it may encroach more on somebody's lot than it does on a lot on the other side. But even with this, the way I read this, you're still gonna be able to build up to your, your boundary of the utility easement, you'll still be able to build a fence up to your boundary of the utility easement.
But if, you know, there's no gate, the city would still have to rip that fence down to get to the.
Well, my understanding of this is if, if there's not a pre-existing fence, that that won't be a problem the next time, because you won't be allowed to build in there, and so you won't need a gate.
Well, I guess my point is there would be no fence allowed at all in the backyard, because no matter where you put the fence, you'd still have to be able to get through that fence to get to the utilities.
To the, from the ends of them.
There's no ends.
If she owns on the other side of the easement, she owns on both sides, if, if, if the power line goes down, she owns both, both sides? How's she gonna get the other side if she has a fence?
Yeah, like right now, there are fences on both sides, so you wouldn't be able to get.
I'd just like to see examples of that, because I'm unfamiliar with anything that, any platted properties that go through the easement.
Yeah, yeah.
So old town, and for the older subdivisions, all have utility easements, if they don't have an alley, they have a utility easement plotted in the back. I know a couple of them. There's problems on the ends, because the house was actually, they, they split off part of a lot, and that creates a problem, and those would be exceptions to the rule, I would think.
That is kind of what happened in, in our neighborhood. I think everyone bought six lots and built, and then they sold off chunks of the back, and so there's different depths of lots, and there's no direct easy path to get through, and so the fences are all different depths too. So those are the kinds of, in older neighborhoods, I think that might be where you're most likely to run into that, and I just want to make sure that there's some sort of plan to.
I think this is the exception rather than the rule, so I don't think this will apply to a lot of people, but there are some people who have an easement that runs down the middle of the property. It's strange, but it does happen, and so if we were to say you can't build a fence, they would, in an easement, they would have, they would have a ten-foot yard.
But we have language for that exception, it just has to be approved by the public utilities director and, that's what common sense requires.
Right. And it'll be a case-by-case basis, and we'll do it again and help people out.
If you go through town, you know, what I would say is, I'm gonna tell you right now, there's places where there's an electric line or a water line where there is no easement. You know, we'll get in there and find out, there was never an easement acquired. You know, at the same point in time, those people want their water and they want their electricity, you know, so we work through those as we hit them, is what it really boils down to.
The way it is now, in her situation, if she owns on the other side of the easement, she can build a fence across that easement. There just has to be removable panels across the easement, and you actually get little, little signs from the city that said removable panel. The way I'm understanding this and talking with Justin is, what the issues you guys are having is when, when someone builds the fence all the way down the easement, not across the easement, correct?
Exactly, exactly.
So in her situation, they're still gonna be able to build across the easement with an opening gate or, or removable panels.
And again, I would come back to, every situation is a little bit different, you know, but especially in new developments, you know, where things are a little more organized than, you know, maybe they were in times past to get things to places. You're exactly right, you know, if people are building on both sides, right up into the easement, then there is no place for anybody to get to anything, in essence. And so if you go through and there's ten houses on each side, you're tearing down twenty different people's fence in order to get the work done.
Not ideal.
Not good.
But we have, in a new language, we have the ability to give them exceptions with inspection and approval by the
Absolutely.
Planning director and the utility director, so I don't think that's gonna be a, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I don't think it's much of a problem in most of the town anywhere, it's not, places less where it's a little bit of a problem.
But it certainly makes total sense, if we move forward with new developments.
To have it be designed properly.
Okay, and this, you know, this will be, will this be scheduled?
Say February eight.
What's going on in February?
February eighth is the.
All right. Any other thing, questions, comments? Hey, all right, we'll go back to new business then, item number one, dental force out walnut conditional use permit.
And this is, I'll share my screen. Been requested a duplex, this is currently zoned R1. Would like to have a duplex built in this area, there is other other multifamily dwellings in this area, it is mainly a single-family. This vacant, this lot has been vacant for some time, and this is a good reuse of this. The design fits well with the character of the neighborhood and, and meets, meets some of our housing needs. So that is the location, I'll show you a little bit more on that. I think I have a PowerPoint that's a little bit more cohesive, but this is what I have right now. This is the site plan for it. And this is for the, the elevations are this, this particular structure. And we do have the developer here with us. Slade, these are the comments we get to make.
Well, this thing, I mean, we throw around the words duplex and single-family attached, so this would be built as a single-family attached. So it could be duplex, I mean, it's, it's one structure, it can't be, you know, separated and sold, this would be built as a single-family attached. I plan on keeping it and renting it, but it will be built, so it will be split, and then it can be sold as two single-family attached homes. Just to clarify that. And there is, as far as the neighborhood, there's a, just on this block, there's actually a fourplex just down the street. So it's not, you know, out of character at all, that's what they're already doing in that neighborhood.
Please explain the difference between single-family attached and duplex.
A duplex is gonna be a structure that's built, it doesn't meet the, like, the fire code requirements that you need to split a building. Like, if it's one building, it can never be sold to two different people, one, one person will always own that, and it can be rented out, I mean, you can't, you couldn't ever sell it one side. Single-family attached is, they're attached, there's two single-family homes basically, literally attached. And once you've got the firewall there, that, and you got obviously separate services, all that, and then you do the lot split, when you're all done, have it resurveyed, and it's, you know, zero outline, and you got two structures, and, you know, you sell it, sell one side to one guy or someone else, and they have a party wall agreement that takes care of issues like the roof, or the paint, or, you know, upkeep, whatever, those things that are common for the structure since they do attach. But.
Different construction.
And is that filed when, is the party wall agreement, even though you're keeping it, is it filed when you?
At the very end, yeah.
They receive that with the.
And after it's all built, then I gotta go through and, and get the, it's, go and get the lot split, I guess, you know, after it's done, get it resurveyed.
So why are we not doing that beforehand, that's what the intent is, that's my question. Why are we not doing the lot split beforehand? Why are we waiting until after it's constructed, because whenever it's constructed, it's constructed as a duplex. It's, it's, it is one structure on one lot.
If it's, if they're gonna split it, it's constructed as being able to split, that's what he's, that's what he's telling you. If you build it two different ways. Yeah, that's in the code.
Well, I know it's in the code, I've seen it, it's, it's, it's getting clarification for me, because I wasn't here whenever all of that was coming through.
I think that's not always the thought when they're going into it, is that they're gonna split it and sell different, the different sides of it. Like, he was just saying he's planning on keeping it.
And she had the exact same question I had too.
He has the opportunity to do that later if he wants to, to sell them off individually.
Right, and so then it goes back to the discussion of, like, when, whenever you go to sell that, just for clarification, whenever you go to sell that, how is that, who's responsible for like the roof and, and the walls and the things like that, because you could have one side that's dilapidated.
Right.
A, a structural issue, and then the other side, the owner keeps it up, so who's responsible for that part, because, I mean, it's a dangerous building, do you just tear down half of the house?
That's a good question.
That's where the party wall agreement comes in, it's a lengthy agreement that is between owner A and owner B. You know, it, you know, goes through all those items, so, so you have a legal contract that's addressing those. Now, the lot split, though, isn't something that comes here.
Oh, I understand, right, I understand, that's why I was asking, why are you not doing the lot split before?
I think it just depends on the intention, knowing ahead, ahead of time what they're planning on doing with it.
Well, this is just duplex, right? Single-family attached. Oh, this one is gonna be a townhouse.
Right, that's why I was asking the question. So that it's a duplex on a single lot until it's split. Right, yes, except it's structurally too different, and got that.
And does he have to, I don't think he had to tell us his intentions, we could have.
No, no, and that's.
He was just kind enough to tell us.
Sure. And I'm asking for my own clarification, so I can educate myself.
Right, to me, to me, I look at it as a positive. It's, you know, single-family attached or duplex, it can be split, you got two homeowners, homeowners, probably see nothing wrong with, you know, them two renters, but definitely why I've mentioned it.
So firewall isn't required in a traditional duplex?
It's different types of firewalls, it's a lot stricter when you're splitting it and you have it in separate ownership.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm gonna give you an example. When, when you build what I would call a townhouse, where you can actually split it, the firewall has to go clear up to the roof, so there's no, it's complete separation, and then even on the roof line, in a normal house, you just have regular sheeting, where when you're splitting it, have two separate owners, you even have to have a fire rating on top of, the, the roof itself has to be fire rated, so it's completely different types of structure.
I appreciate this question, because yeah, I wondered too about the differences, but thanks for the explanation.
To Jenna's point, though, shouldn't, do you establish the center line when you just have the, when you just have the slab port, I mean, is there a, is there any kind of survey done to establish that center line at that time, or do you establish it when you go to sell?
Oh, so what I do is I put the structure in the center of the lot.
That's not, no, is there a center line, because you and I both know that what we consider center and what the guy that comes in and stakes it considers center might not be the same thing. And so is, is that established, and that's, this is, I think, a general question to go along with what she's saying, and the other thing is, when is the party wall agreement filed as to become part of the deed, is it filed when you get the CO, or is it filed if you sell it down the road?
It's filed along with the lot split approval from the city.
So that would be down the road?
When, whenever I decide to split it.
Down the road.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
And I can answer part of that, Cal, because there's responsibility to figure out where the center is.
I, I, I understand all that, but I, but one of the things I'm trying to do, let's say, God forbid that an owner of a townhome that has not been split is no longer the owner for whatever reason, and somebody goes to sell half of it off, because it does have a, it, it is built so it can be, and they don't record a party wall agreement, is, is it our regulation that in order to split it, that a party wall agreement has to be filed?
Yes.
We do have to have that on record before we can.
A party wall, okay, okay.
My question, and, and I know that he shared it, but, I mean, it just seems like whenever I've looked back on other meetings, it's, it's happened as well, you have it constructed and then they split it. But why are, why do we have that, if we know that that's what the, if we know that that's what the intent, if we didn't know, that's one thing, but if we know that that's what the intent is, why are we not requiring them to go ahead and split it before?
Because it costs more money, because now you have to have a surveyor involved, but I wouldn't require, I wouldn't make him do it until, unless he's gonna do it, so me as a commissioner, I wouldn't require him to spend more money if he's gonna keep it together for, forever.
Well, in the future, we could buy the whole thing as a, just keep it as like a duplex.
Yeah, you wouldn't make him split it till they're gonna split it.
As he might decide not to.
Yeah.
Sure, I'm, I'm just asking questions. Just asking questions.
It's a good question.
Yeah, because, again, I mean, as I've said in the past, this, people watch this, and if I have the question, other people are gonna have the same question, just don't know how to ask it, and even I don't know how to ask it.
This guy understands, because he builds them, he wires them, we, we kind of have an understanding of what it is, there are lots of people out there that may not have.
When you asked the question, then you gave the explanation.
It was the same wording, I had it written down right here, the exact same question, so, I mean, it's just a good discussion to have, so that we can educate them.
But we are one hundred percent sure that our regulations right now call for a party wall agreement.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, good, because I had to work my way out of one and oh, and part, because I saw that they did not have a party wall agreement, so. Commence of the need for party wall agreements.
Lessons learned, lessons learned, and if we're gonna be doing it, we need to be able to make sure we have something in place here.
I was trying to slow you down, I wanted to be real clear on what we, what we were doing here, okay. Other discussion.
And just to go back to what you're saying, it's like, it could be done that way, you could do that, so I think by code, you know, you can do it either way. So I don't know how you could make someone do it one way as, as opposed to the other way, if that makes sense.
Well, it's not that I'm asking to make it, I'm asking for questions and clarification as to why we're doing the way that we are doing it. Because I wasn't here in the previous discussions, and so I need to have clarification for myself, that I understand what it is that we're trying to do. Because as the question was, it's like, what's the difference between a duplex and a single-family attached? I've been in real estate for twenty years, and before coming to Ottawa, I never found a single-family attached.
I, I, my, where did we land on the whole question about the center line?
We didn't.
You, you started saying something, and you say that can answer. You, you started saying something, and you say that can answer that.
Well, that's the surveyor. Well, if he, so Cal's question is, if he doesn't put it exactly, he says, well, I put it right in the middle. Well, Cal has a good point, if he didn't put it right in the middle, but that's the surveyor's responsibility, because it requires a stamped licensed surveyor to do the lot split. So the surveyor is going to make sure that he put it where he said he was gonna put it, and the, and the, and the property line that splits the, the two is in the correct place.
And if he had to...
Then, then, then it's not gonna be in the center. The surveyor establishes that center line.
So the surveyor will base it on the center of the wall, if need be, instead of...
Correct, oh, okay, yeah, okay. The legal description, when he goes to sell it, will be based on what's actually there, and not what should be there.
So you don't have to go in there and have a bigger lot by accident.
Correct, that's the surveyor, yeah, okay.
Right, and so just to clarify why I don't do it this other way, you're talking about, it's just easier. You know, when you're surveying, I mean, it's down to the, I mean, millimeter, you know, you're building a house, it's like, yeah, put it in the center. But yeah, could it be off a quarter inch from the center of the 75 foot, 75 foot lot, of course, you know? So after it's built, they can kind of like, this is the center of the structure, you know, this is now the lot line. And not like, oh, it's off a half inch, you know, it just makes sense to me, build it, then they come in, they can split it right down the center of the house, or the, you know, structure.
The only way to do what you're asking about, I kind of agree with you that it should be done, but it's not gonna be. But the only way to do that is to have the surveyor come back when the slab is there and establish the center line, add it to the legal description at that time, and that's gonna be pretty costly for him to do that.
And I'll also say, you're, when he says to the millimeters, it's a hundredths of an inch, and you're splitting hairs, because he, he'll put it where he says he's gonna put it, as a surveyor, surveyor comes there, and as long as he's within reason, the surveyor, if he put it where he said he was gonna, if he, if he's a half inch off or whatever, the property line is still gonna be down the center of the lot, because we're talking about a wall that's this thick. So, it's all split in hairs at that point.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. I mean, because, again, it goes back to anyone who comes back and watches this, they're educating themselves too.
Somebody goes, hey, this wall is, it's on your side.
No.
Okay, anything else on this one? Because I've moved up some people that need that. I don't wanna rush it through, I wanna get all the questions answered, thanks, let me go do that on you. Okay, item number two, 916 South Walnut, conditional use permit.
Can I make a quick little question to, um, we have a, um, one of the items that we have, I should have asked beforehand. I would like for Dennis to help me with, I think he has to step out. And that would be the Wildcat vacation, um, on, uh, 3292.
Okay, well, yeah, we could move that, I don't think we have anybody here for the Kingly rezone, do we?
I know we do not.
Okay, well, let's, I think we do, I think we do have people here for 916 South Walnut, is that correct? Okay, so let's do 916 South Walnut, and then we'll move to Wildcat Drive, and then we'll come back at number three.
That work for you, Dennis?
Thank you, thank you. This is another duplex on Walnut, uh, the block away. This, uh, this particular, this had a house on it until 2001, and it was demolished, and is likely to replace that with a new book, um, a duplex in this, in this area. And Mr. Love is here with us today. And this is what, this is the site plan. Garage on, I believe, it's a little bit further. Yeah, it's a little bit closer, so his setback needs to be a little bit further back than, than Slade's. Uh, that is the only, um, difference in the two as far as, as the setbacks go. And then here's the, the elevation, so it looks a little bit big. Again, this fits in with the character and the use of the neighborhood, and will be a good addition, and, um, especially for replacing what was there with something that can house two families.
Yeah. Care to make a comment about center lines?
I'm not gonna start the waters there.
But this is, you're building a spring duplex, right?
Yeah.
Cal, is it really close to the boundaries, and I'm looking at the picture, he's trying to...
We are within a setback from ours.
It's pretty deep in there.
So what I have as a question on this one, we might have it on the other one, and I've asked Wendy in the cast. It looks like, is it the conditional use, the different conditions that you're putting on this would be, like, green, like...
Landscaping, driveway.
That's how fast to be.
And, yeah.
That would be required with any other structure that's being built or needed, right?
That's true.
So what condition are we putting on?
Oh, so you're saying this is not the killer, this is just a standard requirement, so does that qualify to be a condition?
I understand your question.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I, I...
And the definition is, is a little more going to be as well.
Okay, so is there a place for me, I mean, I've looked, and Wendy tried explaining it to me in the fall. I'm just, is there a place in the codebook that would allow me to go and kind of educate myself?
We'll find it for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If it's not there, we'll, we'll address that later.
Thank you.
Mr. Kim, you, you, you got, you got her point, right, which she is, this is standard, you know?
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna make my standard comment on a three-bedroom duplex that has a one-car garage and a one-car driveway. That's, that's not enough.
Right.
It's just, it's not enough. And, but it, it's allowed. But at some point, we need to do something about that.
Providing more...
We're gonna provide more duplexes if we're gonna increase density in these already residential areas, then we need to not exacerbate a situation by creating traffic congestion and parking congestion.
Off-street parking requirements.
And that was another question that I had as well, was like, it's required two parking spaces, assuming the garage is one, and then the drive is the other.
And fortunately for us on this one, the, 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 so we got a little bit more room in the driveway.
I, I can't see in the picture, is there a room between the sidewalk and the garage to park another car?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sometimes there is.
Right, just depends on where the sidewalk is.
Yeah.
So, anyway, any other questions?
Is there any sidewalks on, on this block or across on the other side?
Well, I lost my place again.
My, my, I think the trail's pretty low, you can do the sidewalk.
Yeah.
A walnut, yeah. We can cross them to number our pages, so that it's easier to...
Yeah, I think we will, that'd be...
Would we be able to do that in the future, especially if we have such a large packet? Number the pages, that way it's easy to address where we are within the packet, because it's easy to get lost, you know?
We've gotten lost, just...
Well, and then if, if you're on a computer, you're scrolling through, it makes it hard.
Just go one, two, three, four, then, then make copies of that, send it out.
So... Any other comments on this one?
Yeah, I, I do have to go back then too, back to the sidewalk question. So if there's no sidewalks there, it doesn't look like there's any sidewalks at the previous one we just talked about going south, is that right, Slade?
So like on the, the east edge of the property?
There's no sidewalks there now?
I believe there is, I believe there is on mine. I don't know if there is a nine or block.
It looks like there's a...
A thinner block, I...
Looks like there's an east-west, but it, it's hard to tell if there's anything south.
Well, Walnut would have a trail going down it.
The reason I'm asking is, then my question would be, if there's no sidewalk, because I don't think there's any side, if, there might be a little bit on your part, but all, but continuing down the block, there's no sidewalk. So my question would be, would we require him to build sidewalk on his lot if there's no more sidewalk on the rest of the block? If we're using the trail as the sidewalk?
It looks like, yeah, because there's a sidewalk here, I can't tell if it goes all the way across or not.
I know in the middle block, there's no sidewalk there.
And there, there is the trail here.
Correct. So what I'm saying is, if, if there's no sidewalk there at all, and we're saying the trail is the sidewalk,
Well, yeah.
are we gonna require, I don't know that we'd require Slade to build a sidewalk there either?
Is that required in the ordinance, that new development, new, new, put sidewalks? I know there's a trail Seventh Street North along the side of...
And that's why I asked that question, because if the answer is, well, there's a trail there, well, do we require it or not?
Yeah, right. And the trail is, I mean, there's some yards that are deeper to the sidewalk than what this is to the trail.
I think there might be one on the front too, though.
I can't quite tell underneath the property boundaries.
Yeah.
Would you allow us to look at that a little further and then send something out to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's just a study session right now, we're just studying.
Mr. Kim, I've got a question.
Now, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that we haven't required to put a sidewalk in, because we're gonna use a trail now that's been brought to your attention, to say, no, now you're gonna have to put a sidewalk in. It's not.
Because the question was, the question was where is it and have we required it, have...
Yeah.
Right, do we require one?
Vice chairperson, what is a food fit?
What is a what?
A food fit.
What?
Number nine, a duplex is a food fit for the neighborhood.
Well, it must be meat, it's supposed to be good.
Oh, oh!
Oh, he, he's creating... It's called a lunchtime study session.
I should have thought about that myself, you know, okay.
We didn't use whatever that is.
Okay, sorry.
That new, uh, AI software.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so is that all we have on this one?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, guys, you guys set around to listen to this confusion, if you want to, or you can leave it, if you want to do something.
We won't mention center lines anymore.
All right, so we're gonna move on then to, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna skip item number three for the present, and we're going to move to item number five, which is vacation of utilities on Wildcat Drive.
I think they're asking for a vacation, uh, 24 utility easement along the lines of Lot 2 and 3. And along the way, some of Lot 1 and Lot 4. And I, I would, Dennis should be more able to, to speak on this.
Yeah, so I can answer questions, uh, if they, this is, uh, y'all know where the, out by Central RV, and then behind the, the gas station out there, they're looking to merge that into one property. And there is a utility easement that, that runs across that, at this point, there will never be a reason for us to run utilities through there like that.
Okay.
And, and so all they're asking is that we vacate that easement, and we said no reason not to do that.
If I heard Gene clarifying that it's a lot combination, to combine it into one lot.
That's correct. And I am reaching out to the utility companies, the, the outside ones, uh, to see if they have anything new that we're aware of, and if they would be all right as well. So, we're getting more information on that particular, uh, the city doesn't have any, any problems with this, and...
Who the utilities, who there, it could be, uh, Evergi could be out there, Evergi can just ask.
There's AT&amp;T possibly, um, the internet provider. There, there are five different, um, contacts that I have reached out to.
Evergi and, uh, Rural Water, they just recorded their new easements, they went ahead and released everything that was underneath there, same as what I'm asking here with you guys.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't realize this was...
Oh, yeah.
This, this kind of goes along with your comment you made in the beginning about getting with the developer in the beginning of the development and getting utilities in the right places, because in this situation, if it's never been split, and, and like Dennis says, there's no utilities there, there's no reason to have the easement.
Right. Was that part of the original, there, I know there were some efforts to try to develop that way, and then further past I-35, and it just all, it didn't happen. That was what, 20 years ago, maybe? It just never got developed.
This is a, the person who owned the gas station, and owned the land that surrounded underwater equipment, which we're gonna be talking about here now, had developed Wildcat, Phase 1 and Phase 2. And they expected to have, they expected to purchase another piece of land behind, it's now housing, and develop that into a commercial industrial area. That never happened.
Gotcha.
Because it was, that piece of ground was purchased and turned into county residential subdivision. So, yeah. If you have, if our utilities director has no problem with it, I'd say...
No problem with it, right.
Yeah, I see no problem whatsoever.
Right.
Thank you. You gotta run it. I know.
Thank you, Dennis, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, 634 North King Rezone from I-2 Heavy Industrial District to M U R C Mixed Use Residential Commercial District.
I appreciate it, you guys.
Thank you so much, please.
Not wrong.
Sorry, they introduced you.
No, that's all right.
I was saying, I was trying to figure out, okay, what, what is he with, but I didn't know whether you were with this one or the next one, so...
No, I'm the knucklehead related, the next one. Got everything done?
There's two pages for you.
So...
Thanks, I'll talk to you guys.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this is an application by, from Rick Dietz, um, to rezone, um, this is heavy industrial at the moment. North King, there at that intersection. It's currently in heavy industrial all the way, I'll get to the zone in a minute, but it makes more sense. This is the building, it was formerly the Warner Fencing.
Oh, the fence company?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, so this is, his proposal is to turn this portion of it, which was formerly the office, into residential. And he would like to keep, so you can, the, you can see the, um, the, the building here, this is the one that he wants to do residential, and he wants to keep the rest of this as storage or garage space. Uh, we haven't received an actual plan for, for the redevelopment that this is gonna be, we're just looking at the rezoning right now. So that, that's the building that he'd like to, this is another portion of it, that, that faces King as well. So these are the two pieces that, that front came. So it's possible that something else could be, I, I'm not, I don't know what entirely his plan is, but what he's presented so far has been residential for the, the smaller building, and then, uh, storage or garage use for the other. Um, and this is the current zoning, uh, so you see, we have the heavy industrial, north and south there. And then there's light on the, on one side, and we have R2 there. So it's an interesting mix of things there already. And I am not, and, um, I'm not opposed to the plan, I think it's great, this building has been here, what I found that recorded is, is 1911. And so if he wants to come in and, and restore this building and save it, uh, I think it's a great, great building, I think he needs to do what he wants to do with it. And, and, and rezoning it is, is the only way that he'll be able to turn that into residential. So, um, and the mixed use was, uh, the best that we could come up with, my concern was with it just being, um, spot zoning. And, because we have all these other things going on here, it does fit, um, with, you know, their residential use, and there's been talk about turning, rezoning some of these other portions to the north, uh, there's been some interest in rezoning the, one of the north parcels into, um, R1 or R2 as well. So this, this, it, it's trending towards being more of a residential. But I wanted to open that up for discussion on what you thought, I, the recommendation is for mixed use. But I wanted to hear the thoughts of people who have lived here longer than me.
Awesome. I, I definitely think it's awesome, because I mean, that building's been empty since I've been here, not been here since so far. That's awesome.
The Warner, so I'm, I'm gonna wax, I'm gonna come Warner here.
Yeah.
So, at one point, Warner had tremendous national prominence, it actually had the single largest private platform on the railroad in the country. Uh, they started out in fence manufacturing, and then went on to manufacture things that are highly collectible right now. Hidden miss engines, windmills, which I, if anyone, I actually have binoculars in the car, but I go looking around, see if I can find a windmill, because I'm desperate for one for the historical society. Um, gas pumps, water meter covers, um, anything made of metal, refrigerators, all kinds of things. But they went underwater in 51, um, and that's when a lot of those buildings fell out of use. And now I just lament driving around seeing all these some people, and so I'm really excited that there could be a use for this building and to bring it back. My question is, do we need to look at what all of this, like, do we need to look at this as...
Sort of spot zoning.
As a bigger zoning? I mean, I, there's, there's kind of a general sort of mix of things there anyway, I don't know that it would be out of character to turn off. Is there any, is anyone doing anything with those other properties? I think they're kind, a lot of them are kind of empty.
Exactly, it's very underused area.
Would, would making that area mixing, make it more viable?
I know the buildings to the south are used by different contractors.
Okay.
And so who knows what they use it for, if they even change it.
And I didn't know, like, if, what's in use, that was, I guess, my other question, because a lot of them look a little, uh, empty. But if they're used for storage, then they, they might not look like they're in much use, so I'm just... So I'm just really curious about that, but I'm really excited about the prospect that one of these buildings might find a new life, um, because they, they have a great story and.
Maybe inspire their mixed use in that area.
Yeah, yeah.
I have no problem for a spot zone here, because I think it's awesome.
And it's currently vacant.
I still think that, I mean, it's not necessarily not allowing the spot zoning. It's, if we allow the spot zone here, where else will we spot zone and not, not have an issue with it, that the neighbors have an issue with? I think if we're gonna do it, it's as Diana was saying, are, can we look at what would it take to rezon that area so that actual different development could possibly happen there? And as you said, down the street, there's another, there's another potential development that's, that's, that has, we'd be running into the same issue of, of not having a zoning that would allow it.
Right.
So instead of spot zone, spot zone, is there anything that we can do to actually look at the big picture for future planning of the area versus just because we have someone to come in to develop it?
And it's a great project.
Sure, right, yes, absolutely.
Same as a meeting in the future.
Is this all out of the water lane now?
It is.
Okay.
It's, isn't it like a five hundred here?
It's five hundred.
Yeah, that's why. And, and you mentioned, but like in nineteen.
Fifty-one, yeah, I was, you could boat across it, but, um, so I just want, I, I know the levees sometimes do weird things with how they move water out of areas, so I just wasn't sure if that was out of the water area or yet now or not.
It can get pretty damp, from what I understand.
Yeah.
So rezoning that whole section would not affect
Oh, I don't know. I, I do have that. What I'm saying is, we would need to check into that.
Yeah, right.
Because I don't know.
Well, we have a, we could have a different. Rezone, and, you know, if it's already used as a project. I mean, I'm sure that we can grandfather them in as a.
Well, that's called a certificate of legal nonconforming use, which is another thing that I was going to ask. Does the city have any process for applying for those legal nonconforming uses? Or do we just have like a little pen that says, it's okay?
I can find out for it.
And I know that only because of the fact that whenever I worked for the city of Kansas City, Missouri, that was one of my jobs as zoning. I would go out and we would have applications come through, that the zoning was one way, one time, and that use has continued throughout the years, and they never ever changed their use. And then they came in to do a project on it, and then they said, oh, the zoning's changed, you can't do this anymore.
Right.
So then the, the, um, individual would have to go through this whole process of filling out the history on the property, showing that it once was a legal use. And then the city would allow for that nonconforming use in, in the zoning. Does that make sense? And, and it just would help, I think, clean up some questions. I think that in the past, there were some questions about lot sizes. Why did this happen? You know, the zoning changed, this, that. And if we had a proper documentation, and, I mean, that was my passion, my job. I mean, we'd go to the microfilm, and we would dig up the old building plans, and we'd look at.
And you have the ancestry of a, of a property.
Of a property. And then it would give it that stamp that, as long as it, um, was nonconforming, if by chance fifty percent of it, if there was, like, for instance, there was a, um, a house that was used as a, an apartment complex, but yet then it had been downgraded, the zoning, and, and that apartment complex was no longer allowed. But then there was a fire, and more than fifty percent of it was damaged. They could not put back the apartment, which goes into the density of the neighborhood, or so.
And we have those same issues here.
Right, I know, which is why I was asking if we had something that, that is there, because then it would allow whomever that, if they didn't want to, and it's not a matter of not wanting to, if we changed the zoning, it would allow the continued use, because it was legal at the time the zoning changed. So.
I'll look into what that process is, because I don't know.
Yeah.
Just a fancy way of saying grandfathering.
Right, it is, it is, but it's a paper, it's, it's a certificate, and it goes, and it goes, it's a certificate, and it goes with the land.
Right.
It goes with the property. And so whenever you sell that property, like I said, the value of that house was of more value as an apartment to the person who owned it. But because at the time, there was a fire, and it destroyed more than fifty percent of it. So then to put it back, they would have to put it back to code, and putting it back to code, they couldn't meet the, 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 the perimeters of what an apartment complex was.
So when you say goes with the property, you would file something with the register of deeds?
Yeah, you would.
It would almost be like.
And it adds value, it actually, it's, it's true value to the property.
So it follows the title work then. Here, I don't, I don't think they do anything like that here. I think it's just up in that office.
Right.
They don't, they don't correlate with the registered deeds like what you're talking about.
And, and not only would it be with the city, but it's also with the county, and then the county, if they ever had something, it all meets the same, because it's recorded right there.
The title searches, we pull it up. Well, I'm excited about this project. I just don't know if we need to be thinking on a bigger scale or not.
Okay.
I think if you're thinking on a bigger scale, you've got to have some landowner desire to have it.
Yes, for sure.
That's a discussion for another time. I mean, you don't want to hold this project.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. I agree. I just, but I'm, my little historian heart is thrilled to see that someone's gonna disown this, so.
Anything else?
We have, there's the.
The sign issue. Yeah, the sign issue.
I've got three minutes. Oh, I didn't.
Don't ask so many questions.
I'm very interested.
We went through this in twenty minutes.
We had someone reach out to us, um, we talked to, to Mike about, um, the size of our billboards and what we allow for. And what we allow for in the city is maximum five hundred square feet. And apparently the industry standard, what this person's been told in this letter, is that it's six hundred and seventy-two square feet is the smallest that they do. And people are putting up billboards here for five hundred. But we don't have any language in, that would allow for, um, any sort of variance here, or, um, it's, it would have to be a change of ordinance for us to be able to allow this. For that, for this sort of change, or for us to allow things that were bigger. So this is really just for FYI, but this is something that is, is being discussed and has come out, so.
And I, I, I wish.
So if you want to put a billboard on the property, that why then?
And this is, I was looking at, uh, future, I believe, you say there, um, just the future relationship with this company is interested in building and doing billboards here.
So, so there's no difference? It, that's, that's make a difference where the billboard is, as long as it's within the city limits? Or are there other regulations?
Yeah, I'm assuming it's gonna be facing mainly the interstate.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay. And is that a special? If we change it, does that only, um, does that only go along with, along federal highways, or would that change it for every place in the community that billboards are allowed?
Well, we can determine what that, what those parameters are. You know, what we're talking about is, is just, um,
And the state, the state has requirements on there, on the highway, because I've done a lot of work with Fred Winger that has.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's who I was thinking of.
I would think, I, I, I would think as long as state or federal highways, that our regulations should mirror what the state allows. So there's, I, I mean, I think that's, to me, that's the way I would approach it, but I'd approach it on state and federal highways in the, within the city limits.
And there, there are quite a few, um, cities that allow for much bigger billboards than we do. So the larger ones are within, you know, our state regulations, just they're not in Ottawa, so. There's nothing, it's, I, I have no recommendations here, this is just informational.
Okay, but you will come back to us at some point, possibly.
If it's asked of me to do so, yes.
Okay.
Well, that is all I have. Thank you for your patience with me in this hodgepodge.
Oh.
It's an educational.
All the patients. Thank you for your patience with us.
I was gonna say.
I did tell you this, but this is an easy one. You were the one with, with, there was absolutely just no brain or so.
I mean, the beginning of seven, seven, I don't know what happened in that.
You had me excited about the billboards, I'm thinking, okay, you know?
Wait around and meet me.
Maybe we'll catch the ones.
Okay, so everybody's getting, I believe, so I guess maybe we better adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
If there's no, if there's no other business, it's moved, and there's our second.
Second.
All in favor, stand up and no say on.
Hi.
So all of them can start leaving.